Lord, we thank you for this and another day that you've given us. And we thank you for all the many blessings you've given us. I pray that you'll be with this group here today, Lord, if they would know. The thing that's done and saying would be of course how you pray that you'll watch over us, care for us, protect us, and keep us safe. They were the ones that's lost love, was the ones that's sick and in turn give us our sins, Lord, with that Jesus' name.
Mr. Tim, you want to speak?
Appreciate it. I'm Tim Tucker, I'm a candidate for state senate district three. I live right here in New Albany, after the last six years, originally from Pontotop. I want to just sort of explain what I'm about. What stands at the top of my interest and concerns is public education. But what seems to people want to ask me about is I am pro-life. I am a strong defender of the second amendment, defender of the constitution and all 27 amendments. But it does, it's important to me that our public education be fully funded. And that's not just about teacher pay raises, which seems to be at the top of everybody's conversation. It's, I think it's time that Jackson understand the difference in what is an investment and what is an expense. Our public education's investment in our future, investment in our children. And I wanted to let y'all understand, like I said, what I'm about. To know more about me, when I was 18-years-old, I felt the call of ministry. I attended three years of Bible school because I wanted to be prepared to do what I felt called to do and try to give God my best. Still serving the kingdom of God with over 30-years in the ministry. I have, when I felt the call to public service, I attended law school. So I've got a law degree, I'm a practicing attorney in this district and in the first and third judicial districts. I'm not saying that I'm called to be the state senator, but I believe that I'm called to public service and I'm trying to find the path that allows me to best serve my community. And it'll be up, I think, well, the scripture says in Matthew 22, "Many are called, but few are chosen." It'll be up to the people of the third district to decide whether or not I've been chosen to be the next state senator of this district. And I am here to ask for your vote, but also when I look around to see the sheriff, there are some things that I have an understanding and knowledge about. If we pass some laws and they're not well thought through, it can have unintended consequences. And we have all seen what can happen to those type of things. And I believe I am better prepared and more qualified to serve for those reasons. But sheriff, there are things that I believe if you get a bulletproof vest, it costs about $600 is what I understand. Well, feds will pay half of that. State has declined to pay the other half. Well, I'm in favor of the state helping to cover that cost. Those vests are good for five years is what I understand. Now, realistically, they'll last longer than that, but if you are beyond where the manufacturer's no longer insured, you're putting yourself at risk of being sued if an officer were to be injured. And that puts the county at risk. And I'm saying the state ought to be looking at picking up that. That ought to be something that's a priority. I do believe in funding infrastructure. As I said, the difference in investment and expense. There are things that we can cut and things that we can look at and cut expense. But we got to understand that investment produces a return, and a return can be an economic growth. And I just believe that Jackson serves a sense of what's an investment and what's an expense. I serve as a guardian at Loudham, sometimes in this county for this youth court, but I am a salary guardian at Loudham in Pontotop County. While I was in law school, I helped to write an amendment with a group of students to the vulnerable adults act. So I've actually set down and penned legislation. That was in, I was in my mid-30s when I finished law school. So that would have been in the fall of 2000. So in the spring of 2001, I was the only student of that group that went to Jackson to watch that go through the process. And while there, I felt inspired. So I came out of law school and I guess I was so inspired, I said, hey, I'm going to run for state senate against a two-term incumbent, Nikki Browning. It was good for my law practice, not very good at running for state senate. But it let me know that, hey, sometimes you get a reality check. But I thought, this is something I can do. I prepared myself for this. When Nikki retires, I'll consider running for that seat. That's where we're at. Nikki's retiring as a six-term incumbent. And I mean, Nikki was my coach in American Legion baseball. So I mean, you know, I remember, have, again, don't not remember knowing Nikki was running. But I just want to offer myself for this office. I am running on Democratic ticket. I felt like when I looked at it, it was my best path to being in the general election. And I am, like I said, offer myself. I believe if you look at what I have done to prepare myself for this, that you will at least give me consideration. Like I said, I lived here in New Albany after six years, where I have chosen to make my home. And I want to represent the people of Benton, Union, and Pontotop counties and offer them something that would be a voice in Jackson. I don't want to go down there to follow the leader. I want to go down there and be a voice and actually try to lead in some directions that will help our state and help improve the conditions for our children and our future. Thank you for your time. I've got a card here that's got my cell number, I've had it 20-years. It's also got an email address, and I've got some stickers. I don't think y'all will go out and stick them on your car necessarily, but it is the state seal, Mississippi, and says, "In God who trusts," to let you know what's important to me. I'm going to pass it by. I tell you what, rather than that, I don't want to take you more to town. I'm going to leave some here that y'all can just pick up if you're interested. You always know how to get in touch with me. I will be accessible and available. Thank y'all.
Good luck. Y'all ready? We need to approve solid waste register.
Motion.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Randy. All in favor? Need to approve some school bus turnaround. You got them?
There are two of them. One is on 1031 County Road 307 and 1014 County Road 234, Davis.
Who are they?
Don Cannon and...
Louis Prude.
Thank you.
That's one of those.
Okay, thank you. I couldn't read that.
Oh, yes, yes, I got it.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve. Second by Dave. All in favor? Motion carries. Need to approve MACA, Mississippi Assessors and Collectors Association Membership dues of $1,000.
So move.
Motion by Randy. Second by Evan. All in favor? Motion carries.
Do you have? Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I'm getting my head for three of them, babe. Some Martin Luther. Okay. Need to approve personal property in Sullivan's list for 2018.
We've got personal property in the city, some in the county, and then some for Myrtle. And those were just ones that have not paid their personal property yet. They, we're still handling them.
Make a motion to approve. Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Randy. All in favor? Motion carries. Make sure I'm not on here.
Mr. President, could I ask a question? Ms. Collector, what do you do to, how do you try to collect these? Did you put lanes on automobiles or what?
We do put a lane on that.
I can't get a tag, can I?
Yeah, they, we just put a lane on it. We continue every year and it adds up. We have some that, you know, are very delaying, but they may come and pay a couple of years, but it keeps going on each year.
And you sell it, don't you? You sell it.
We can, we can go, the sheriff and I can go, and we can lock their doors until they pay it.
Will you do that?
I have not yet. We can take property, personal property from that to steal to get money for the county.
Okay, let's build it up again without everything.
Can they still not buy a tag?
No, they can still buy it.
It's got to be the personal property on the mortgage. It's the only thing you can buy a tag. Thank you.
I just remembered that one because I hadn't been there very long. We're locked her up. All right, we need to approve the petition for reduction of assessment.
And these, this was why we couldn't do it the last meeting where some of these were out of business that were still on our personal property list. That had to be removed because they were not taken off like in '17 and '18. So we took those off for this time. And that was personal property, and then there's only one that has real property. And it was, the property was assessed incorrectly. So that was on that list today.
This, I probably did have one that you probably assessed mine wrong.
Probably two and a half.
Sometimes we go back and we might find stuff we didn't have on that list.
You have pretty big spray on that.
It does.
Yeah, I know. Make a motion to approve. Motion by Dave. Second by Evan. All in favor? Motion carries. Need to approve inventory deletion of an iPhone 8 from EMM.
So move.
Motion by Randy. Second by Evan. All in favor? Motion carries.
Well, because of that baby boy taking care of his mama.
You're going to have to sign all this.
That son is going to have to keep his mama's yard open.
Yeah.
Don't give Randy that credit.
My yard is awful right now after the storm.
No, it looks like the rest of that one should have been there.
All right, we amend the budget to actual.
If we did that in September, this just spread it on the minutes. We got to end up covering it, put it on the minutes, and that's the 19 fiscal year. We should spread it on the.
So there's no formal action? No minutes, I mean, no motions?
Motion or second?
Right, but it's just to let y'all know they're being put on the minutes. Correct.
All right, we need to approve the state change in meal allowance for travel.
Do you have that sheet?
Motion to approve. Motion by Randy. Second by Evan. All in favor? Motion carries.
I just forgot mine. It's being, just so you'll know, it is, maximum state reimbursement is $46 a day unless traveling to a high-cost area, which includes Oxford, South Haven, and Starkville. But anyway, but this is what the state. I think it was 41.
And a motion to approve it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was just quiet.
Need to approve travel for training of supervisors to Jackson December 10th and 11th, including the newly-elected supervisors and county administrators. I didn't know the county administrator was getting reelected.
We're not.
Need a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Motion by Dave. Second by Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. Need to approve agreement with the pool and Three Rivers. And I think it's on the sand pit right?
Is that right there?
It's on the sand pit at Blue Springs, saying that we're responsible. We got the permit approved, and we're responsible.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Randy. Second by Evan. All in favor? Motion carries.
I have something for you to sign, please.
All right. All right, need to approve emergency watershed, EWP grant.
I had one other beat to sign, I'm sorry.
Did we not do the airport?
We missed the airport. Well, I've got the new.
So y'all got a whole agenda here.
Number 13, approved from Airport Federal Matching Grant Agreement. Number 13, is that not say that on your 13?
It sure does, I just missed it. Okay, we need to approve an Air Force Federal Matching Grant Agreement for the city of New Albany in Union County. You got that?
I've got this here.
So move.
Motion by Randy.
Second.
Second by Dave. All in favor? Motion carries.
That's the L A Z, oh, I just remember a little bit, and it came a while back.
You lit up after. He's going to pay the money.
He's going to pay the guy, pay the match, yeah.
That'd be good. Okay, we need to approve emergency watershed grant. That's what you're talking about now. Motion by Evan.
Second.
Second by Randy. All in favor? Motion carries.
Let me check to see if you need to sign something, please. Okay, no, that's it.
We need to approve the correction of payroll authorization for Jeff Akins at the road department and Kristy Shannon in youth court.
So move.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor? Motion carries.
I need you to sign those two.
I like it, makes it that keeps me, keeps me straight. All right, y'all ready? We need to approve payroll authorization for Kristy Sullivan in tax office and Karen McMillan in the tax office.
That's when there's certain checks.
Right. He says, "Pay," huh?
Motion.
Motion by Steve. Second by Evan. All in favor? Motion carries. Need to approve contractual services for attorneys and court personnel.
And that is for youth court and the, the contract has been, I mean, we have to have it prepared. We're just waiting for it to be brought to us.
So we need a motion to prepare it?
No, it's en route, so it's being brought here. It's been prepared already. It's already been signed up, and we're just trying to get it here. An attorney has it in his hands, and we're just trying to get it here.
Okay.
All good?
It's all good. Spoken with.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Randy. All in favor? Motion carries. Approve inventory deletion from sheriff's department. Tight writer, iPhone, pistol.
That's a tight writer. iPhones, like 99 cents a piece, wasn't very big cost, that's the, that's all, you know, about all the weapon changing. Van 14.
Yeah, we had to change cell phones. Only we had, we're no longer can talk on what they call our first net, our first one, without going up to the new phone that runs a Van 14. So that's what that was for.
Anyway, I'm going to have to.
All right, so right after things.
No, it's right.
Oh, no, come on, okay.
I'm going to have to sign these later. I'll sign these when we get through. No, we need a motion, Evan.
Second.
Second by Dave. All in favor? Motion carries. Got to approve reimbursement to circuit clerk for outstanding checks.
You can explain that better than I can.
I can. What we do, once a year, twice a year, when we get so many outstanding checks, we settle them to the county, saying that if the person comes back and wants this money, then we will have to get it from the board. So what has happened is, actually, we wrote a check to Omni Source, which was metal management at one time. Lady called, this one was dated June 18th of '18, and they were going through a desk store, came across the check for $160. They can't cash it because it's void after six months. So they want me to reissue the check. So I have to get the money from y'all because I've already given it to y'all to get it reissued. And we're reissuing it to Sims Metal Management now instead of Omni Source.
Do you want to include this with it?
Yeah, I mean, that's where we settled it to, the county.
Oh, it was just that, just that?
Yes, just that one. It was all in one check, but then that's the only one I'm asking back.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Randy. Second by Steve. All in favor? Need to approve the payment to circuit clerk, circuit clerk for grand jury. Motion by Steve. I mean, by Evan.
Second.
Second by Dave. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, we got another one here that ain't on.
Welcome, Mr. Kurt Clayton.
You want to tell them about this engineer subdivision?
What we've run into is kind of like what we discussed in the few, I mean, in the past on some subdivision that's engineered, just on a plotted subdivision. The county takes a road in after the subdivision is built and all this stuff. Well, we can't address that subdivision until the board takes that road in. If we address it by one address, when the board takes the road in, then we have to change the addresses to every house on that, I mean, on that road. And what we've been doing is using a number. So I done some checking with some of the surrounding counties and looked up the law. And the law says the board can take a resolution to keep that name in a subdivision, as long as it is a plotted subdivision and not just somebody building a driveway up there that wants to name it after their grandson. So we're just asking that y'all allow 911 to use the name that the subdivision provides with us, as long as it's not a name that we already have on the road somewhere. Either way, once y'all, once we do that, I can address that street off of whatever the name is, and then whenever the county does take it in, nothing changed it other than that road gets put on the road registry, but no address has changed. And what's happened in the past is, just say that if you lived at 1030 Williams Road, and we change it to 1030 County Road, well, it takes FedEx and UPS and your internet service folks years to get that address to them through the system. So they're not getting their packages, they're not getting their mail, and all that stuff. And it's starting to make it harder on fire department and first responders going to a bunch of these 380 roads, which are the new roads, because in one subdivision that we'll have, we got like 365 and 370, all the way up to 370. And they tuck in a new road a couple of years ago. Now we have 385 in this particular subdivision. So when you're trying to respond, there's no, there's no way to know where a 380 or 300 road is because they're scattered all over the county. So this way, if we've got these names in this particular subdivision, we're knowing we're going to that individual subdivision, we'll know exactly where that road is at. Kind of like Kingston Ridge, if you start naming those roads off in Kingston Ridge, we know exactly where we're going as far as to follow.
So basically, what the order provides is that if a developer wants to build a subdivision and they want to have their roads by name, then it's got, they're going to have a plat filed here.
Right.
It's got to be engineered, and it'll be engineered, they'll have their plat file, and then we go. Now, look, if they don't care about having their road by name, they don't have to do that. They're just going to have a county road.
Well, we can't put a, the problem we run into, we can't put a road number, we can't issue a road number till we take it either. That's the problem.
That's right.
And a lot of times, the builder can't get the money to.
To do the roads.
To do the road.
Up to the specs required, until late.
It was just a big problem that we kept running into. And I told Kurt, I said, "There's got to be a way around this." And that's the way that they, other counties are doing.
Some counties.
We ain't had a whole lot of.
Like Marshall and Benton, they don't do county road numbers like Louisville, they do by names. And we've done numbers, but you can do both. Some counties do both. So this will just be specifically for engineered subdivisions in the county. They're going to be by name. Everybody else will be road numbers.
Both match?
Yeah. What we got now, name?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second it.
Motion by Dave. Second by Randy. All in favor?
Very good, big guy.
Motion carries.
It's probably on the back of your episode.
That was definitely a check.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we need to sign right here? Or is she effective there?
This is for future.
Because it causes us a problem in both of you.
It's for anybody who is not yet, if they haven't taken the road in yet, then it would apply. But if they've taken it, then we are not going back and changing.
Right, we're not going to change.
Because it causes problems with those states.
Even though we'll get requests too, I imagine, but. Mr. Jim, you got something to say?
I just appreciate being with you all day. And come along, we hit the wheel, give us stock.
Appreciate it.
We got an issue that we need to.
I need a bunch of money out here around Ellis County, I have a lot of trees down and damaged. Could you give me some money to fix all that?
Kurt's already got that.
Kurt got that now? Okay. All right.
There's a matter concerning some litigation that the county's been involved in, and an issue has come up which needs to be discussed. Will anybody have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion. Got a motion by Randy.
Second.
Second by Dave. All in favor, we're going, uh, executive session? Motion carries. Motion carries.